This meeting of the common council to order, it is January 23rd, 2024. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and every justice.
If the clerk would call the roll.
Thank you, Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Roda Frada is absent with excuse. Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jutser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado is absent with excuse. Alder Strassmann. Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Yay. Next item is the consent agenda. We could use a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Anything to be removed? Any corrections? Seeing all the happy faces, we will call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. With that, we get to the administrators' report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Few items of note. This Thursday at 4:00 PM is the first Business After Four event hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. That'll be taking place at the Four Winds Farm on Fishatory Road. February 16th at 1:00 PM, our senior center is hosting an event in recognition of Black History Month. Retired Edgewood professor Dr. Charles Taylor's film titled Leaders of Madison's Black Renaissance will be played, and a discussion will follow. Our consultant working on the teen center feasibility study has indicated to staff that they will be getting work in earnest this week, so you should see some additional information forthcoming in regards to that project in the coming months. And we had talked last meeting about postcards in regards to the police services facility. I know you all received an email from Adam Sear, deputy city administrator, with an update on that last week, but I did want to confirm to you all this evening that approximately 15,000 postcards are in the process of being printed. They are estimated to arrive in mailboxes next week. And the two dates that have been identified for upcoming community information meetings are February 6th, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Doxa Church at 2,700 Novation Parkway, and on February 8th, also from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at Leopold Elementary School at 2,602 Post Road. And then finally, the last item I have is I want to extend thank you and appreciation to both our public safety and our public works teams. Over the last couple of weeks, they've faced some challenging conditions to be out and about in our community, to keep our community safe. There's been multiple events, both just in frequency and also in significance with heavy snowfall, and of course, the frigid temps, so I appreciate all the work that both of those teams have done.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Chad? All right. We'll move on to committee reports. Plan commission.
I'm sorry. Hold on just one moment. We had a meeting on... I'm sorry. We had a meeting on January 16th, and we had a couple of items about the hub that is going to continue to move forward, but we needed to make a change to the setback. It was a reapproval because it had been too long. And then also looked at an ADR for the hub with some changes, such as a change to the height of the building to reduce the curb cut required, and some changes in the width to allow for emergency vehicles, relatively similar things than you would see. And then also, they had to make that update based on our approval of the posts for a potential future cover over the facility. So we had a long discussion about that and what that could look like. And then we had a pre-app PDD for Spring Hill Suites, a potential new hotel going in across the street from that other stay bridge over near the Target area. It's going to be a same developer, really interesting project, five stories, 100 rooms, serving a slightly different audience. So we had a long discussion about what that would look like, and that will be coming relatively soon. I believe they're trying to get approval potentially at the earliest by the end of March. And then we had a discussion about the neighborhood plans and just plans in general. So the neighborhood plans had an open house. There were 79 people that signed in, plus others that jumped in without signing in. There was also a greenfield visioning meeting that kind of got more into the details for the Greenhood neighborhood plan. And then also, the sustainability plan has moved into Phase Two, which means that like a lot of the information gathering is complete. We are still working on that public survey, so if anyone still has that link, you can still submit for the public survey. We do have 500 responses already. We would like more, but that is apparently one of the best responses the consultant has ever gotten from a community, so that's pretty exciting to hear. And then there is going to be a meeting on January 30th at 5:00 PM. It's a community presentation and a listening session about the sustainability plan. So if anyone's interested in that, again, January 30th at 5:00 PM. And then... That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Any questions for Gabriella about any of that, Jim?
Yes. The hub.
Yes.
Now, there's like going to be two hubs, one in Madison and Park and Hughes, and then the one on Traceway. One is for basically the urban league, and I'm just wondering if there's going to be maybe some confusion there that we have to think about designating those differently.
Yeah, I saw that sign go up about, I think it's been up about two months now. And I thought, well, how can that be the hub when we have it? So we may want to reconsider.
Staff is aware of that, and if I recall correctly, there also has been conversation about a hub planned for the LA Tribe neighborhood in the city of Madison. So ironically, we're just talking about this today from a staff perspective, so we may have to think of some potential options to differentiate and make it clear that this is in Fitchburg and/or maybe even not use hub. So stay tuned.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to public works. Dave?
I'll move approval, Resolution R-0224, approving maintenance services for well number four and well number 10.
Second.
Any discussion? Board of Public Works?
Public Works approved.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved.
Great. Any discussion?
Well, Jay, this is, both of these wells, well number 10 was last pulled, I believe, in 2015, and well number four has been having some microbial problems with that. So these are scheduled maintenance to keep our wells at capacity. This is scheduled to be completed before May, or May 15th, for getting to the heavy pumping. And it's a contractor we've used before for this work, and there's quite a bit of detail, if you read, about what's being done, but it's required work to keep our wells functioning properly.
So these wells will be out of service briefly while they're being serviced?
That is correct. Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is, you have one more.
I'll approve, move, approval of Resolution R-0524, authorizing purchase of one and a half and two-inch water meters.
Second.
Uh, motions made and seconded. Board of Public Works?
Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance Committee approved.
Discussion?
Well, this is approximately 58 to 60 of these larger meters that are scheduled to be repaired. Also in this is, we hired a limited-term employee, a master plumber, to be doing these installations, so we're doing approximately 60, 58 to 60 this year, Bill, does that sound right?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven? Okay, and so it's a four-year, it's a four-year project.
These are mainly in commercial buildings.
That is, that is, that is correct, Jay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to park commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a couple of things. We received naming for the Hartong Fields. You saw that in the resolution was the main thing we wanted to, main thing we wanted to report, and I think that was about it. It was a very short, short agenda, the last meeting. Oh, yeah, also, we awarded, awarded a design firm for the Southdale, Southdale Park. Consultant was selected for that.
Great. Speaking of that, the, is there, have you been working with Scott about having a neighborhood input meeting regarding the park?
Southdale?
Yeah.
We have not, but let me put that, let me make a note here, and we...
Yeah, I've been meaning to get back to him, and there's a couple residents of the neighborhood who've asked me about it, too, because they know we've got the money ready to go, we just need to get it done.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Jim? Or, okay.
Scott is aware of a need to have a meeting in that neighborhood to talk about some enhancements to the park there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for raising your issue.
All right. Library Board?
Nothing to report.
Commission on Aging Well, we have a couple of resolutions, and our senior center director would love to come up and speak with us this evening.
See, first resolution? Is it county contract?
Yeah, let's get a, let's get a motion. So I can't make the motion, so someone else will need to do that.
I'll move approval, Resolution R-0324, 2024, Dane County, Contract for Case Management and Nutritional Services.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Commission on Aging Well approved. Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right. Jill, take it away.
As I shared with Finance and the Commission on Aging, this is just a annual county contract to fund the nutrition program, both congregate and home-delivered meals, as well as case management. And then the MA case management is actually billable income, so it doesn't guarantee we reach that amount that they've allocated for us, but we can bill up to that amount. So pretty standard year-to-year contract.
All right. Any questions for Jill on this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If someone could make a motion for the next one?
Sure, I will. Motion to approve Resolution R-0424, amending the 2024 general fund budget, Senior Center LTE Nutrition Site Assistant.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Commission on Aging Well approved. Finance?
Finance approved.
All right. Jill, you want to tell us about this one?
Yep. I'll just kind of condense the memo that you have in front of you, that this is a position that I put in the previous two budgets that wasn't approved. So I did approach our Friends Group, who generously offered to fund this position for one year, knowing it was a limited-term position. And with that funding, I am coming to you today to hopefully add this for at least this year. As you can see, our nutrition site manager hours, we allocate 20 for nutrition and 20 for volunteer coordinating. There's an explanation of why those positions were merged way back in 2007, but moving to 2024, it's just not feasible for one position to hold both responsibilities of programs that have grown quite a bit over the years. So by adding this LTE position, we will be able to allocate more time. Mandy is holding both of those positions that she can use to increase volunteer recruitment. She will still maintain a lot of the administrative duties that fall under the nutrition site manager position, which is quite a bit, because nutrition money is actually, a big chunk of that is federally funded from Older Americas Act. So with that federal funding comes a lot of reports funneling through Dane County. So there's a lot of administrative things that go behind the scenes, and if you're really interested, we had the Dane County dietitian come and do a program to our Commission on Aging, and I think it was very eye-opening how that program really works and what it entails to make sure that we are compliant with all the county standards. So again, the Nutrition Site Assistant, that person would just be responsible for being in the kitchen all the time, making sure that meals come in, they're temp, they go out to who they go out to. If a driver doesn't show, they can call somebody, doing dishes, cleaning up after the meals. Not only are we delivering a lot of home-delivered meals, we're increasing our congregate participation. So when you get 30 people coming in to eat, it gets a little chaotic, so having one person there all the time. So again, my goal is to be able to pull Mandy away from some of that day-to-day, keep the administrative duties, and then focus on volunteer recruitment.
All right. Any questions for Jill about this? So we had talked about it, and I support doing this, although the council should be aware that theoretically, this creates a structural deficit for 2025. It's not a lot of money. It's $18,000 or so. Maybe we can absorb that. I don't know, because the 2025 budget is going to be dependent largely on what happens with the referendum. But I did ask Jill, what happens if we can't fund it in 2025? And she said, well, we'll just have to do without it.
No, Jay said he would come and work. That's what I understood.
That was, that was a different discussion.
Okay.
But, you know, our senior center has not had growth in funding to commensurate with the growth in services they provide, so I think this is vital. This requires a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herps?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado is absent. Alder Strassmann?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great.
Awesome.
Thanks.
We'll start recruiting tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Resource Conservation Commission?
Just one note about Saltwise, which is kind of the effort to make sure we minimize salt use, given the weather. I know salt has been used frequently for good reason, but I appreciate the public works staff for being really diligent about minimizing our salt use, because if it's below 15 degrees Fahrenheit, salt essentially is ineffective. So making sure we utilize the salt based on the temperature. Appreciate public works for doing, for doing that so well, but just want to make sure people keep an eye on, on their use. Very, very little goes a long way. And then also, if you see lots on the sidewalk, as now that finally the snow has melted and maybe will dry off a little bit, if there's a lot of extra on the salt, you can sweep it up, put it in a bucket, and then use it again. There's no reason why you have to just leave that salt there for it to end up in the waterway. So consider sweeping that up. And also, thanks to the city for posting that on Facebook. There's been regular posts about the things that you can do to prevent or minimize salt use, so really appreciate that effort for the important purpose to protect those freshwater resources. Thanks.
All right. Any questions? Transportation and Transit Commission?
Yeah, we met last Thursday. Talked about Fitzroona Road reconstruction. We're working with the town of Verona on that, and I guess that, the division of cost sharing there is still an open question. It's about 0.8 miles. If you take Lacey over to Fitzroona, it's about, that's about the halfway point. So from Tonto Drive on the south up to near the roundabout on Nesbit Road, that will, that stretch will go from a rural to a more urban cross-section. It'll have bike lanes. There'll be a multi-use path on the east side. There'll be significant stormwater management changes and remediation. The hope was that they would be able to get that to a state where it could see flooding only like once in a 25-year storm sort of a scenario, but that was deemed impossible, so we're looking at probably two to five years instead. Rimrock Road will be resurfaced and restriped likely in 2026, south of the Beltline, so from McCoy Road up to the Beltline would be the portion in Fitchburg. And we also discussed some Vision Zero. Specifically, there's a list of 28 proven safety countermeasures, and the commission is to familiarize themselves with that. And going forward, you know, Vision Zero can, can impact the future of our road designs and as well as potentially our traffic management process.
All right. Any other, any questions for Bill? All right. We will move on to Community and Economic Development Authority.
CETA meets tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday morning, 7:00 AM.
All right. Well, then, Ag and Rural Affairs?
We have not met, so there's nothing to report.
All right. Bicycle Committee?
Joe is absent, but I was at the Bike-Fitchburg meeting last night, and Mark Hamilton, Chair of the Bike Committee, showed up, and he did share a couple things. So the Bicycle Committee has a list of priorities that they're going to address in 2024, and maybe Chad can speak a little bit more about the expansion of, of the committee, that, for instance, they will go from six meetings per year to potentially 10, and expand their scope from, from just bikes to, I'll say, like, all active transportation?
So we have the Bike and Pedestrian Plan that is needing to be updated, and that has identified a need to take a look at how we're addressing some of our pedestrian-related matters. We don't really have a committee that has that as part of their regular responsibilities, so we are currently intending on updating the ordinance to reflect the addition of pedestrian matters into the Bicycle Committee, so basically become a Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. Another option that has been at least preliminary discussed, but probably won't be pursued, was to put Bicycle and Pedestrian under Transportation and Transit in order to have a more, I guess, a holistic approach with one committee, looking at all different modes of transportation. Still could potentially look to pursue that, but right now, we're looking at the Bike, taking on the ped component. So you will see something coming forward in time for the end of March is what we're looking at, or first part of April, I guess, because of the timing of the Bike Committee meeting. I think the next one is in mid-March. And then we'll look to move the meetings, the number of meetings from six to eight is the plan.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to EMS Commission?
Yes, we have a new paramedic that was sworn in, Hayden Latch, and then we're in the final stages of the deputy chief's position, as far as that hiring is concerned.
Healthy Neighborhoods hasn't met since our last meeting. Housing Advisory Committee?
We have not met since December. Our next meeting will be February 12th. I did notice that Joyce sent out meeting invitations for all of the 2024 meetings, and I believe I got eight, eight meeting requests, which is up from four.
Cool. All right. Landmarks Preservation?
No report.
All right. Tree Advisory Committee?
No report.
And Police Facility Oversight Committee?
Well, as I already mentioned, that the postcards will be going out, but that's it.
Okay. All right. Then we move on to Standing Committee Reports. Finance Committee, you've got a couple of resolutions.
All right. Motion to approve Resolution R-0124. Ezray?
Ezray.
Ezray. All right. Somehow, I think this is probably going to be the last time I'm going to have to repeat that. Enterprise License Agreement Renewal.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved.
All right. Any discussion? You want to give us just a brief overview?
Oh, I will, yes. A discussion amongst the committee, yes. This is a renewal, renewal of the three-year enterprise license agreement with Ezray, and provides geospatial software utilized in most city, city departments for operations, efficiency, and analysis. Chad, do you want to elaborate a little bit more? Not really.
I think you have covered it quite well, but as you can imagine, this software application is becoming more and more embedded throughout many of our departments, and it's been particularly helpful since the city has added a full-time GIS coordinator to help fully utilize the benefits of this software.
Yeah, I was going to also chime in and say, since Dakota's been here, the GIS maps on this, that you can find on the city's website are, are both, I guess, more quantity and more quality.
All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to your other resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution R-0724, amending the 2024 general fund budget LTE staffing.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved.
I presume that our lieutenant has walked up here to speak to this issue?
He has, yeah.
Well, speak to us.
This is a request to use identified savings to fund three LTE positions, a community service officer, a record specialist, and then the special project engineer, to continue those positions that we had last year.
Okay. Are they, so these were positions that were in the 2023 budget but not in the 2024 budget?
These were utilized last year through salary savings.
I see.
To fund the record specialist and the community service officer, essentially started out of vacancies and then became a bit of a double fill to help with workload.
Sure. All right. Any other discussion, questions? Gabriella?
Just wanted to acknowledge the department for being creative in terms of using that salary savings to reduce the workload of the officers, given the staffing challenges that you face. So thanks for, for being creative and making it work.
And I just want to recognize the staff that we have. We have bring two retirees back to help with the workload, so we appreciate their expertise and their willingness to come back and assist.
I'm guessing they're going to be there for training as well, in addition to assisting. Is it correct? Okay, good.
All right. Any other discussion? I presume this also needs a two-thirds vote?
It does not.
No.
Do we need to amend the 2024 budget?
Vacancy savings.
Well, okay, then.
Please stop.
We will not do that. Then I'll just call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And, and, Jay, I have a couple announcements for the Finance.
Oh, yes, please.
Before we move on. All right. Just to, I'd like to announce that the February 13th, 2023 Finance Committee will start at 5:30. I made this announcement in the Finance Committee meeting, but there's a number of topics that may have some lengthy discussion, so just so everyone's aware of the fact that it will probably move to, or will move to 5:30, our next Finance Committee meeting, so, for those that would like to watch or participate.
All right. Personnel Committee?
We meet on February 20th.
All right. Public Safety and Human Services?
We had no meeting.
Any unfinished business? I don't believe we have any, any new business. We clearly don't have any. So Mayor's report, the mayor is not here, so we'll move to Alder District Reports. I'll start with Dave.
Just two things I wanted to thank the, it wasn't in my district, but it's across the street. Thank you for their investigation and quick resolution of the shooting at Monkey Shines before the end of the year. We appreciate seeing these resolved. And second, asking all the residents in my district to keep the storm drains open, you know, with the plowing and the freezing. A lot of them, they weren't even, you know, they're frozen, so I'm asking residents, if you have one in front of your house, please, please get it opened up. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Bill?
Well, I guess, kind of along the same lines of what Dave was just saying there, as I look in my neighborhood, every once in a while, I'll see a fire hydrant that is full of, just snowed in, so reminder to keep those things cleared. Not necessarily District Two here, but I was at the Encompass ribbon cutting ceremony last week. That facility is pretty, well, it's shiny and new, pretty nice. I had a tour given by a couple of the, the physical therapists there, and they said, both of them, between the two of them, they have about 50 years of experience, and they were both gushing over the technology and the equipment that they've got, so that's encouraging. Um...
both of them, between the two of them, they have about 50 years of experience, and they were both gushing over the technology and the equipment that they've got. So that's encouraging. I guess the only other thing, maybe as long as Ned's in the room, he can tell us when he's going to be officially pinned as a captain. That's coming right up, isn't it?
Personnel will take that up on February 20th.
All right. Gabrielle?
I just wanted to also thank Public Works for all their work. I know it's probably been a challenging week that you heard a lot of complaints, including, you know, questions from me, but thanks to the Public Works staff, I know you did the best you could, given like the really challenging weather circumstances. I did want to say that posting on Facebook to acknowledge the challenge and just say that the Public Works was working on it, but it was going to be, take some time before the conditions got better, was really helpful. I think that post was really well-received, and I think that type of communication, even if the news is you have to wait, I think really helps with keeping the public calm, because it is very frustrating to kind of have to deal with those roads. And I myself struggle with, my car does not do well on those types of icy roads, so I know how people struggle. And I did just also want to note that if, if anyone put their Christmas tree out last week and it did not get picked up, that's because there was a delay because of that weather. So keep it out there. Make sure if it snows, keep it on top of the snow, because if it's buried, they can pass it right by. That's all. Thanks.
All right. We had, in District Three, we had a neighborhood meeting last week regarding a new development proposal that's, it's being submitted for a comp plan amendment. They actually did it right. They had the neighborhood meeting before they did the comp plan amendment, so, and Jim was there briefly. I think you were there for the whole meeting, weren't you? Oh. I don't know.
I would have participated.
Yeah. There were, there were a lot of residents there, asking a lot of questions. Some people are okay with it, some people are not, because it's been a vacant lot ever since they moved in, and now there's going to be houses built on it, and, you know. But I think the plan that was, that's presented so far is a pretty good plan. There were, and I'm sure none of you have seen it, but there were some comments that the developer's going to go back and try to rework, so you should see that comp plan amendment coming in the next month or two. And we, Fitchburg got some, some decent press in the, in the, I think it was on Channel Three, or it was either Channel Three or the Wisconsin State Journal revolving around the snow issues and how suburban communities seem to be handling it better than, than the city of Madison did. And, you know, I drive, I drive all day, every day on these streets, and that there's, driving on some of the Madison residential neighborhoods has definitely been a challenge. We've, you know, we've done okay. I mean, it's been, still been rough, but it's also been really, really cold until yesterday. So I think our Public Works Department's done a great job so far. Shannon, do you have anything?
I have no, nope, no report.
Okay. Jim?
Well, according to that meeting, being at that meeting, I thought it was really interesting how they're calling affordable housing. About $400,000 is what they're terming affordable now in the city of Fitchburg, which kind of doesn't work with the way I think about affordable housing. But anyway, this is in Randy and I's district. It's in Madison, but as far as the hub that's associated with the Urban League, Randy and I took a tour of that place, and I think it's going to be positive for Madison, but also positive for Fitchburg, especially in the northern area there. So far, WEDC has moved in there, Wisconsin Economic Development Corps. They're looking at DOT maybe moving in there, which would be really good as far as people getting their IDs and their licenses. Exact Sciences is also have a space in there for training. Some credit union has a place there, but what I'm really excited about is the ethnic food that they're going to be bringing with carts and everything. But it's going to be a good community space, and I think it'd benefit Fitchburg also.
Sure. Yes. Randy?
Yeah. I just want to echo what Jim said. If you have an opportunity to tour the, the hub, the Urban League, please do. It is quite the, quite the facility. And then I also want to echo what others have mentioned about Public Works, and Fitchburg has done a, Public Works has done a terrific job of, and they always do, of streets. I mean, there may be a few moments of frustration, but those are very brief, considering if you drive to the city to the north. And Fitchburg does an outstanding job of clearing their streets, and this time around, they did as well. And as everybody knows, I will be moving on to the County Board, and I have been asked by the Sheriff's Department to tour the jail. So if there's anybody else who would like to join me on that tour, let me know, and we maybe will work out a time and a date, so. You've been there before, have you not? But no, reach out, and we'll, we'll set something up. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Excellent. All right. So we'll move to announcements. The, we have the Committee of the Whole Meeting tomorrow night. We're going to be talking about, we're going to have a, just a, hopefully a brief discussion, although it may get a little involved, about gender-neutral bathrooms, particularly, locker rooms, particularly as it relates to the new police facility. We're going to have a presentation by the Fitchburg Historical Society, and then we will have a rousing update on our referendum process. So stay tuned for that. The next council meeting will be on February 13th, and I want to also have you mark your calendars. Our March 27th Committee of the Whole Meeting is going to have to move to the previous week, to March 20th. So that will be on the third Wednesday instead of the fourth Wednesday. So please see if you, if you can make that day. I know it throws things off a little bit, but that's what we have. So that brings us to item 13, for which we will need a motion.
I move adjourned.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.